I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to our Thursday morning meeting, August 22nd, meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Andy Hunthausen. To my left, Commissioner Tom Rolfe. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
To his left, Brandy Spangler will be taking care of us today. Good morning, Brandy. Greg McNally, Director of Planning and Community Development. And to my right, Commissioner Candace Payne.
Good morning.
Nico Hash, Deputy County Attorney. And Jenny Chambers. Welcome Jenny. She'll be sitting in for Roger Balth today. Jenny is the Director of our Public Works Department. Thank you for being here. There is a sign in sheet in the front as well as agendas. We'd like everyone to sign in so we have a good record of who's attended our public meeting today. And we will start with our consent action items. I'll turn it over to Jenny.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Today you have one consent action item. It's two A, Resolution 2024-93, declaring county property surplus property and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the consent action item? How about public comment on the consent action item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none? Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent action item two A as presented by Jenny Chambers.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved and seconded approved consent as presented. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a professional services contract amendment number two between Lewis and Clark County and Three V Distributing Inc. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Dustin Noel. I'm the shop manager for Lewis and Clark County Public Works. And today for you this morning is a contract amendment between Lewis and Clark County and Three V Distributing Incorporated to extend the contract period of performance from August 31st, 2024 to November 1st, 2024. The original contract was approved by the board in October of 2023 with a scope to assemble components to build two designated dedicated international snowplow trucks for a total cost of $105,740. The contract was amended in December 2023 by adding two additional freightliner trucks to be built into snowplows with a total cost for all four trucks of $211,480 and no extension to the period of performance at that time. Budget authority for this work is in the FY25 fleet capital budget. Staff recommends approval of the contract amendment number two with Three V Distributing Incorporated extending the contract period to November 1st, 2024 and authorize the chair to sign. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So to put it in layperson's terms, we essentially bought new snowplow trucks with the parts and pieces and things and this organization, this Three D Distributing is going to be assembling them for us and putting them together to get them ready to roll. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that is correct. Yep. There is four total trucks. Now there was two and then two more. And this is to give him some more time to complete the assembly of all four trucks.
And this is just an extension of time. Essentially, it's no change in the contract other than that.
Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Great. Questions, Commissioners? Any questions?
If I, if I might, if I remember, we've been working on this since maybe before I got here, three and a half years ago and and you had a lot of problem in getting trucks and getting parts, the blades and the spreaders and whatnot and it's been a kind of struggle getting all this done. But it looks like we're proceeding on and we'll have four, should have four new trucks on the road for the snow season.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Commissioner Rolfe, that is correct. Yeah, it has been an ongoing since probably about 2021 for two of the trucks and then since last year for the next two cabin chassis trucks. And he also, they, Three V Distributing is also having the same supply chain issues that we have locally. That is creating issues for him to complete all his scheduled builds. Thank you.
Thank you for your persistence.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Any questions? Commissioner?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is there a chance, I always worry about when winter actually starts in Montana, you know, is it going to be the first of November or?
Labor Day.
Labor Day. So are we, because these are being done in, I mean, he started the first two and then the next two. Any chance we can get one or two of them before the, okay, November?
November 1st.
Yeah, so.
Chairman and Commissioners, there is a possibility. There's, we are in the process of having all of the components and trucks being delivered to Three V Distributing, which is in Conrad, Montana, that dimension. And there is a possibility that Three V will be able to start and finish at least two of the trucks prior to November 1st.
Okay.
That's a possibility.
Well, I always want to think about these things. We all know winter comes whenever it comes and sometimes we need snowplows. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, to alleviate some of your fears potentially, maybe just talk about our current fleet. We do have, we do have a current fleet that we're replacing some, so we're not without, I guess.
Chairman, that is correct. The Public Works fleet has a total of 14 dedicated four-wheel drive snowplows. That we are very much preparing for the season. And so there, and the trucks that these four are replacing will also be taken care of and ready to be used for the time being. So we will not take those trucks out of commission until we get these trucks.
I thought maybe we had four trucks that were no longer operational and we'd be short.
Sure, that's not, yep. We will keep these trucks running until these trucks are turnkey, ready to haul snow.
Thanks. Good question.
For the questions.
All right. Any other questions? How about public comment on this item? Public comment on this professional services contract amendment? Any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment forward. Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the amendment, the professional services contract amendment number two between Lewis and Clark County and Three V Distributing Incorporated, as explained by Mr. Noel.
Second.
Moved and seconded approved the contract amendment as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? Appreciate the explanation and some education as well. Yeah. Okay, Commissioners, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We will move on. Next item on the agenda. Partners for Fish Wildlife and Park Program Landowner Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the Big Black, Blackfoot Chapter of Trout Unlimited and U.S. Fish Wildlife Service. Good morning, Mr. Carlin.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, for the record, I'm Dan Carlin, County Engineer. Before you today is a landowner agreement between Lewis and Clark County, the Big Blackfoot Chapter of Trout Unlimited, or BBCTU, and the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, or USFWS. For the Stempel Pass Road Crossing of Poor Man Creek and Dalton Mountain Road Crossing, oh, excuse me, scratch that last part, Pass Crossing of Poor Man Creek. Public Works has been coordinating with BBCTU to complete the construction of the new bridge for the April 2023 Memorandum of Understanding. BBCTU funded the new bridge's design with technical oversight of the design from Public Works. BBCTU also financed the construction with the help of several grants, one of which was from the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. Public Works supplied the materials and installed the temporary detour. A condition of the USFWS grant funding is to establish a landowner agreement with the grantee. The agreement stipulates that the landowner grants the USFWS authority to complete the Habitat Improvement Project or carryout management activities with financial or material support described in Attachment or Attached Exhibit A. The term of this agreement, also referred to as the Habitat Retention Period, is 20 years and will be completed on June 14th of 2024. During the Habitat Retention Period, the landowner must maintain the habitat restored under this award as well as the improvements. As the final owner of the new bridge, the county is party to the landowner agreement. Staff recommends approval of the landowner agreement and authorize the chair to sign. And I realize that that memo looks, sounded a little different than the one that you probably have in your packet. I believe I have a prior version that I just read to you, but the gist is the same. Going into a little bit more detail on that Exhibit A, it does specify some dollar amounts. So this, this project, to elaborate a little more, began in 2022 with Trout Unlimited. We signed an MOU to complete this project with them as a joint project using our budget-wise, it was our unanticipated partnership dollars. We committed $16,000 in that original agreement to this project. Further, Trout Unlimited acquired several grants to fund the remainder of the project. One of them was this one that we're talking about now with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that is stipulated here, the cost breakdown is stipulated here in Exhibit A. They contributed $228,400. You'll see a landowner contribution, that is the county, of $14,426.50. That was the culverts, the gravel, time, and all of the things that go into building the detour that we constructed for that project. You'll also see a personnel cost of $5,000. That was my time, the Bridge Department's time, Otter Zachroll's time, and some time from our director over here. A lot of that wasn't probably laid out in your memo, but I gave you some additional detail, so I can answer any questions you may have. Yes, sir.
If I might, we're going through fixing some of these culverts, turning them into more, I don't know, maybe less obtrusive water flow flows down there to make it easier for the bull trout spawning season, as my understanding. We've done a couple, three of these on Poor Man Creek. Are there more yet to be done later?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, that is a good question. So these have been going on, stepping back a long ways. I started my career in 2006 with a consultant firm and one of our clients was Trout Unlimited. I have conducted several of these myself, several on Stempel Pass, in fact, and I believe this is the final crossing of Poor Man Creek that Trout Unlimited is going to tackle for this purpose, which is pretty exciting. So it's been going on for well over 15 years. And they've made a lot of headway. So this is, I think, the last step for them on this particular creek.
All right. Thank you.
I think you're right. Question?
I have a, it's probably plain to everybody else, but the county is the landlord. What land, how much land do we, is it because of the road right of way or the creek or the, who owns the land on both sides?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, thanks for the question. So this goes through Forest Service territory, Forest Service ground. However, we have a county road that has an easement right through the middle of it. And further on top of that, the final asset, so this, according to this, $880,000 bridge is now, or once complete, will be the property of Lewis and Clark County. So the charge of this agreement is for us to not take out that bridge. I think that's a pretty, pretty easy task for us to accomplish because we're going to want to keep that bridge for at least 70 years. So we'll far exceed the 20-year life of this agreement.
So if we have a tragic accident where a school bus load of basketball players goes off the bridge and people are killed, whose liability insurance is involved?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, in the unfortunate event of that hypothetical happening, we carry liability insurance on all of our infrastructure and things like that. That would be our insurance.
Okay.
We would carry the liability for the maintenance and the condition of that bridge, as we do on the other 96 bridges that we have in the county.
Okay, so the landowner holds the liability and not the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, so that's a tricky thing. It's very similar to our other roads and I'm sure our legal counsel over there is hoping I don't say anything incorrect here, but like with any of our roads that we do maintenance on, we strive to make sure they're in a great condition that's safe, as safe as possible and practicable for any of the traveling public, and that includes our bridges.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any contribution there? Okay, good. So just to, again, I like to put this in terms for those that might be sitting in their living room or in our audience today that don't have a clue what we're talking about or haven't been part of the history of this, and this is which I'm sure they gathered, but replacement of a culvert on Poor Man Creek, which is on Stempel Pass Road, and that road is under the jurisdiction of the county, passes through the Forest Service, and this is a great public-private partnership where Trout Unlimited, which is a private nonprofit organization, I believe, has been interested in replacing this culvert for the health of the stream and the spawning of the bull trout, which the Blackfoot River is a bull trout stream. And so they have kind of pushed this forward in that wanting to do it plus looked for and found significant funding in order to replace this. And again, $880,000 project, almost, is that what you said? And I think that's close to the number. And we will have a brand-new structure, which if we tried to replace this structure ourselves, we're looking at that cost that could have been borne by the taxpayer and it is not the case. So this is a great opportunity to replace aging infrastructure that is problematic for the health of the stream and do it in a way that is really of value added. We get a brand-new bridge that, like you said, it's engineered for today's standards and will likely last us, you know, the next 70 years if it's cared for and properly installed, which is part of what we're doing here. So that's fantastic. And I am very, very happy to support this, like you said, too. And since I've been here, I started in 2007. We've, I think it is the last crossing. I'm pretty sure that it's the last one we've, we need to do. So it's great. And these partnerships have worked very well and the infrastructure's been upgraded for Lewis and Clark County and the citizens of Lewis and Clark County. So it's been great. Commissioner, please.
I just have one more question. I'm looking at the budget table that is included in this packet and under the landowner, and that's us, there's the $5,000 which went to our world-famous engineer. And then there's other. What the heck is the $14,426.59 for?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, that is for the materials and fuel and equipment time that we use to install that detour that goes around the project while it's being installed, which is actually happening as we speak.
Okay, thank you.
And for those that want a little more detail, essentially, we constructed a detour around this bridge site with a temporary bridge and all of that. Just explain that a little bit so people understand.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair Commissioners. So this is, again, it's a bull trout stream. So there's a lot of restrictions and stipulations that must be met in order to meet the permitting requirements. One of those that has been a challenge throughout this entire project, especially coordinating with four different entities, is there's what's called a fish window. So different trout spawn at different times of the year, bull trout. The window that is most advantageous to do work and disturb their little lives is from July 15th through September 1st. So we have a 45-day window to do any work that happens within the stream. So this project began on July 8th with moving dirt outside of the ordinary watermark of the stream. And on July 15th at 7:00 a.m., our road and bridge crew set three culverts, very large culverts in the stream, and then backfilled over the top of those for the temporary detour. We did not use a bridge in this case because it's so tight to the hillside, we wouldn't get our 50-foot span temporary detour bridge in there. But we worked with the permitting agencies to accomplish the detour in a way that they were comfortable with.
Great, thank you. Any further questions? Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Carlin. How about public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Public comment? Okay, hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contract as for Partners for Fish and Wildlife Program Landowner Agreement between Lewis and Clark County, the Big Blackfoot Chapter of Trout Unlimited and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, as presented by Mr. Carlin.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved and seconded approved the landowner agreement as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners?
Just a little personal involvement. My first ever bull trout was caught downstream from here.
Wow.
And then, and I caught it and released it, of course.
Okay, I was going to say, Commissioner, I might have to turn you in.
So it's kind of a personal involvement.
That's great. Thanks for the story. All right. Anything else? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. All right, we're on to the next item on the agenda, which is Resolution 2024-92, Updating the Precinct Polling Place in Lewis and Clark County. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Let me prepare a map real quick and we'll get going.
All right.
Morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, Connor Fitzpatrick, Lewis and Clark County Elections Division Supervisor. I bring before you today a resolution updating a precinct polling place in Lewis and Clark County. Typically, this is something that we don't do because we set these ahead of the primary and then they're set for the primary and the general. Unfortunately, though, the Tri-Lakes Fire Station Number One, while Tri-Lakes Fire Service area was gracious enough to let us use that space, the space is not adequate for our current needs. Currently, the space is not large enough. When I conducted the polling place survey, I thought we would have plenty of space, but then seeing how the judges utilized the space and then how tight it was even with that, decided that yes, we needed to move this. And then the clincher, of course, was the fact that there is no running water there. We worked with it for the primary. It worked okay. But during a primary election, your turnout is a lot different from a presidential general election. So with these two items in balance, I figured that there's no way this is going to work for our judges, especially in November when things are a little bit colder and the garage bay doesn't necessarily have central heat such as a normal building would. So the goal here is to move from the Tri-Lakes Fire Station Number One to the Helena Valley Community Center, which is a longtime-used location for polling places. I'll talk you through my logic a little bit here through the map, just to show that I do have a reasoning for both choosing the Tri-Lakes Fire Station Number One initially, but then also for the movement here. So shift microphones and we'll go into that. All right, so before you hear, surrounding the eastern half of Lake Helena is Precinct 22. You see the color is a little washed out on the map up here, so let me just pull the addresses off of there. There we go. It's a little bit cleaner for you. The big red dot here is the location of Tri-Lakes Station Number One, where we had the polling place in the primary. Now, the red dot down here is the Helena Valley Community Center. So if we throw address points back on here, you can see that Lake Helena and the river feeding into the, I believe that's the Missouri, if my geography isn't mistaken, kind of divides Precinct 22 in half. By my estimation, we have roughly 60, maybe 65% of the voters up here. And then the rest of them are kind of split between lakeside and the area north of the Helena Valley Regulating Reservoir here. This area was kind of fun to draw a precinct around because we tried to split it in two or three different ways. We kept running into the cap that the legislature was then considering at the time that is now in statute. So Precinct 21 and, gosh, too many dots. 23, it looks like, had to cut into that area and this is kind of leftover, unfortunately. So it's been a bit of a burr in our side trying to figure out just how we're going to get everything going here. Tri-Lakes Fire Station, we pull off addresses again, is up here. It's kind of a perfect spot geographically as it's on the linchpin between the two halves of the precinct. So that's why I was very excited about utilizing the fire station. It seemed like a very good meet-in-the-middle compromise spot. Conducting the survey, space seemed like it was going to be okay. I guess my unfortunate downfall there was that I don't have the best spatial mind, unfortunately. So what seemed fine to me upon placement of tables and elections judges in the area turned out to be on the small side. And considering we are expecting about 266 polling place voters for this election, if they were to show up even in groups of 10 or 20, it would get very tight very quickly. So moving to the Helena Valley Community Center down further south here. It's pretty much a straight shot across the causeway for anyone who's up here. Down the, give me my, not trails, transportation. I can't remember the main street out here and I live out here. It looks like Lake Helena Drive and then you cut over on York Road to Helena Valley Community Center just across from Warren School. Helena Valley Community Center is a, well, it's a community center. They have a stage, they have a very large floor plan, very open. They have a kitchen even for the judges who are interested in, you know, maybe making a potluck or something and bringing that down. That does occasionally happen. And seems to be the, at least in my opinion here, the best option we have this close to the election. Now, of course, I'm sure the question everybody's asking is how on earth we're going to get this change across to folks. So we have a two-pronged strategy for that. First is sending out new voter confirmation cards to all active voters within the precinct. It's going to note, hey, there was a change in your polling place. This is your new polling place. If you're an absentee voter, this does not affect you. If you're a polling place voter, you're going to want to go here on Election Day instead of Tri-Lakes, of Fire Station Number One. Actually, it's a three-pronged strategy. I apologize because on Election Day, we have something we do as well. We are also going to, through our communications director, Betsy Kirkaby, do newspaper, Facebook, TV, radio ads to let people know, hey, FYI, this has been changed. If you are in Precinct 22 near the eastern side of Lake Helena, your polling place has moved. Check in with the Elections Office if you have any questions. And then on Election Day itself, for anybody who didn't get the memo, despite our best efforts, we're gonna have a sign at the Tri-Lakes Fire Station, uh, Number One, saying, hey, this polling place has been moved to this address, Helena Valley Community Center. It's a presidential election. There's a lot of people interested in voting in this one. And we don't want to be the reason that these folks didn't get to vote. We want to make sure that they are aware of the change, that they are essentially aware of, uh, what at the end of the day was, uh, my, I guess perhaps over eagerness, uh, to have a polling place in a very awesome geographical, uh, location uh, that we couldn't quite make work. So, uh, these shifts don't usually happen between elections, between a primary and a general. This is the one moment that they do, because we have, uh, we have good cause. So we're gonna notify the heck out of all the people here, make sure that the message gets out. And for those that somehow missed it, they're gonna have one last chance to catch that message when they go to the polling place on Election Day. Uh, happy to answer any questions and, uh, I guess so concludes my presentation.
Um, do you have a, uh, physical address for the Helena Valley Community Center? Could you look it up on the little map?
I can pull one real quick.
One would think everybody knows where the Helena Valley Community Center is, but it's not true.
Mr. Chair Commissioner, yes, uh, the address for the Helena Valley Community Center uh, is both on the screen and, uh, is three, five, five, three, Tyser Drive. It's across from Warren School. It's a, um, large, uh,
Quonset?
Irrigated steel building, yeah.
A Quonset.
Quonset, yeah, that's the technical term. Clearly, I'm not an engineer.
So, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick, just to help people understand, you went over this very quickly, but the Tri-Lakes Fire Station Number One, one of the things, or several things that were problematic for, mainly for our, uh, election judges, uh, that are gonna be there for ten, twelve hours, whatever the timeframe is, all day, maybe more, fourteen hours. Uh, there was no running water. Their, uh, bathrooms are an issue. Uh, heating up any food, they're, they're providing that service in a garage bay. So it, it turned out to be problematic for something that, that was gonna be, uh, that long in duration. Um, and then, uh, you know, the public coming and going, uh, in a bus turnaround space as well as, uh, um, where, uh, Fire Station was trying to do their work if they needed to. So, a little bit challenging overall, so it was recommended by your, I think by most of your, your volunteers there that, uh, we, we really should find a better site than this. It's not, uh, as workable as it might, we might have thought in the beginning. Is that essentially?
Mr. Chair, yes, that is the, uh, long and short of it. Uh, I was pretty confident that it was going to work, uh, but then, of course, I'm not the elections judge, uh, that is sitting there for fourteen hours, uh, for a full day. I'm not the voter going in there and voting. Uh, my precinct is actually, I believe, Precinct Four, so I'm, uh, further over in the valley personally. Uh, but yes, that is long and short of it is that, uh, the folks that graciously, uh, work elections for us on the ground, uh, looked at this space and went, okay, we can make it work for the primary, but we cannot make it work for the general. So here I am, uh, eating a little bit of humble pie, uh, cause I was very, very happy about having this, uh, location. We've used other fire stations in the county before as well, so that's why I was, uh, not seeing any issues here, but, uh, rose-colored glasses, twenty-twenty vision, uh, looking back and all that. So, uh, here we are, making the update, uh, when we have a moment.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? Any other questions? Okay, thank you for the explanation, Mr. Fitzpatrick. How about public comment on this item? Public comment on this resolution to, um, update a polling place location? Any public comment? Okay, hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-92?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve Resolution 2024-92, updating a precinct polling place in Lewis and Clark County as explained by Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners?
I just, uh, I wanna, uh, commend the staff, uh, election supervisor for recognizing a need to change and getting it taken care of. So, thank you for doing that. We might make, make it as easy as possible for, for people to vote.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Commissioner.
All right, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. All right. We're on to the next item on our agenda, which is preliminary plat, plat application for amended parcels P1 and P2, amending lot P2K of the Han Trax subdivision. Mr. Gonzalez, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Phil Gonzalez here with Community Development and Planning. Before you, I'm presenting, as you mentioned, the amended parcels P1 and P2, amending lot P2K of the Han Trax subdivision, a subsequent minor subdivision, application number twenty-two-four dash seven. The applicant, uh, on the, name on the applicant is Lawrence and Alexis Soski, and the representative is Gary Soski. Chairman and Commissioners, here's the vicinity map of the proposed project. Uh, the hatched marked area is the existing lot, referenced as P2K, address is eight, four, five Cheryl. It's a one-acre lot containing one single-family residence. This property is generally located north of Han Road and west of North Montana Avenue within the Helena Valley. And as mentioned, is bound by Cheryl Road to the north and Michelle Drive to the west. The twenty-lot major subdivision referred to as the amended parcels P1 and P2 of Han Trax received final plat approval on May eleventh of two thousand and six by the Board of County Commissioners. These lots have since been mostly developed with predominantly single-family uses. A final plat, excuse me, on, uh, June fifth of twenty-twenty-four, uh, the applicant and representatives submitted a subsequent minor application in order to decrease the length of a no-access restriction along their lot. Uh, that fire, final plat that was submitted in two thousand and six was filed with the clerk and recorders that had a no-access restriction along the western boundary of that lot. Additionally, restrictive covenants were also filed alongside that plat, number sixteen. Uh, that, of those covenants stated that a no-access restriction exists along Michelle Drive for lot P2K. As you can see on the close-up of that lot we are discussing today, and that notation is referenced on the plat and, uh, and, uh, in detail there. As mentioned, June fifteenth of twenty-twenty-four, the, uh, subsequent minor application was submitted to decrease the length of that no-access restriction um, along, along lot P2K. Uh, the applicant, as mentioned, seeks to reduce the length of it. Uh, it existing one hundred and forty-eight foot no-access restriction down to ninety-eight feet. Here's just a fifty-foot reduction, uh, giving the applicant access along a Michelle Drive. The aerial image above shows the lot, a little bit more detail. Uh, lot P2K, the highlighted areas where that no-access restriction along Michelle Drive, which curves to the north. Here's another aerial image with some more detail showing the proposed removal of a portion of that no-access restriction along the western side of the property. Chairman, Commissioners, here's the proposed preliminary plat the applicant has submitted for the amended plat application. As you can see, the focus is of lot P2K there in the center. Uh, you'll see the, uh, partial removal of that no-access restriction along the western side. Staff has completed analysis and review of the proposed amended subdivision. Uh, the property is currently located within the urban residential mixed-use R1 zone district. Uh, the subdivision will not violate any zoning regulations as it's not creating any lots or proposing any type of new uses. Uh, staff has found the application to be in compliance with the existing two thousand and sixteen Helena Valley growth policy and existing subdivision regulations. Staff has reviewed the original parcel P1 and P2 Han Trax subdivision application, originally submitted in two thousand and four, and staff has reviewed all related planning documents to the subdivision application, the existing subdivision regulations of that time, Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of County Commission meeting minutes from that time. Staff did not locate any specific indication of the origin of the no-access restriction. Chairman, Commissioners, the subsequent minor application was submitted on June twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-four. The applicant received completeness of that application on July second. The application was deemed sufficient July fourteenth of two, 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 twenty-twenty-four, which began the thirty-five-day work review period as laid out. That review period is scheduled to end September third of twenty-twenty-four. As part of the review period, the applicant was sent, uh, for agency comments. The list of agencies listed within that staff report. Those comments have also been provided, and you will note to summarize no concerns or objections were raised through that agency review process. Additionally, the application was provided public notice as required, including a sign posted on site. All adjacent properties were notified. A legal notice was provided in the Helena Independent Record, legal classifieds as in compliance of Montana State statutes. As of this morning, staff had not received any public comment. With that, staff is recommending approval of the amended plat, sub, application subject to the conditions of approval based on the recommended findings of fact you'll find in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, as well as the applicant's representative is here to answer any questions, see how for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions right now? Uh, if not, we can wait until, please, Commissioner.
Um, my, I, I guess, could you, uh, kinda put this in layman's terms, what the, what the applicant is trying to accomplish and why we have to go through this process in this particular case?
Certainly, uh, Chairman, Commissioners. So as I mentioned, the, uh, here, the original, uh, amended parcels P1, P2, Han Trax, was completed in two thousand and six. Uh, there was a, uh, no-access restriction, a number of no-access restrictions along Han Road. Um, and represented by this dash symbol here, you'll see here. Um, so on lot P2K, which the applicant owns, uh, you'll see that there was a no-access restriction placed upon here, um, which is a part of Michelle Drive, and that was conveyed as well within the, uh, the county covenants that were placed. So this app, this subdivision was platted with these notations. Um, so not providing access along that side. So in order to remove, or as we are doing in this case, uh, reducing that, uh, no-access restriction, we have to go through the, um, amended plat process. So it is an involved process just to, you know, to change a few things, but as with, um, uh, most subdivisions, if you have to, you know, unfortunately to change or alter anything within the plat, you have to go through this process.
If I might follow, what, what was the purpose of a no-access restriction there?
Mr. Chair Commissioner, so we did, uh, an, an investigation of the, uh, of the original application. Um, and we, unfortunately, were not able to find any type of reason or specific that was written down or a comment that was made. Uh, we went through exhaustive meeting minutes and, um, within the, the previous application that we had, uh, we weren't able to, uh, to nail that one down, uh, though we, as a, you know, as any other subdivision type of process, we sent our agency comments along with our, um, public works and engineering to ensure that there wasn't anything that we were missing, so we felt confident to move forward with the application.
And that, so I, I guess, uh, it was there, but we don't really know why and, and, and so we have to go through this process to remove, to remove that restriction. It just seems, I guess, at first blush, you look at it and you think this is all within the boundaries of, of a piece of property. Uh, it doesn't have any purpose. Why do we have to do this? And I guess, uh, the technicality of having had it already in there as part of the original approval processes, what we're dealing with.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, that, that's correct.
Uh, Commissioner, and maybe I can help a little bit, and maybe I'll bring Mr. McNally in here, but I wasn't here in two thousand and six either and can't speculate exactly why this restriction is there, but we can talk about generalities, and, uh, we have our public works director here as well. But in general, um, when new subdivisions are platted, Mr. McNally, I'm asking you this, I guess, um, often, we try to limit the number of access points for lots so that there, there isn't a bunch of cars coming on to the collector roads, uh, from different angles and directions, or they just happen wherever. So typically, especially if a lot is sided by two streets, uh, often, or sometimes, there might be a access restriction on one of those streets. Um, and again, I don't know why this one was, but, uh, there's an access restriction on one of those streets so that we guide the, the, uh, driveways to, you know, one street or another, not coming off different directions and causing potential sight problems or close to corners or all these different issues that might happen. And so sometimes when a, when a subdivision is platted, there are no access, um, restrictions put on for that traffic guidance, if you will. But again, I don't know why this one happened. Mr. McNally, is that?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, uh, you, you've summed up a, a lot of the reasons why we might have a no-access restriction on a particular parcel when we create them through the subdivision process. As Mr. Gonzalez indicated, we didn't have, find any specific reason why this no-access restriction was laid out here on this plat. Um, we are very, try to be very careful about the restrictions that we do put on plants, plats, simply because if they do need to be removed, this is what has to occur. There has to be statutorily an amended plat process, which includes a public meeting here with you folks to make a decision on that process, on that, uh, action. So, uh, in this case, no-access restriction is present. We don't exactly know why. And as again, as Mr. Gonzalez indicated, we have talked to other agencies to make sure that if the no-access restriction is removed along this portion of the road, that it will be a safe location for an approach to access. Of course, uh, if the no-access restriction is removed, anybody that does install an approach in that area where it's been removed, we'll have to get an approach permit through our public works department.
Is, if I might.
Please.
If, um, if we don't know why the restriction was put on there and we're taking it off and just having to go through a bunch, why don't we just take the restrict, the entire restriction off? And, and allow it to, allow the, the, uh, property owner to do what they want to from, with their property?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that is an action you can take. The applicant has simply proposed to remove fifty feet of it. So that's what we've presented before you was, is their request to just remove the fifty feet. Uh, but any action that the commission takes, you, you can do that.
Okay, all right. And, and I guess I might ask the, the applicants if there's any reason why not to have it, have the whole restriction taken off?
We will invite them up next. If you'd introduce yourself for the record, that would be grand, please, and maybe even spell your last name, cause I know what you're.
I have trouble with that. Uh, my name is Gary Lasowski. I'm representing my son Lawrence, so good morning. Uh, a great question, Commissioner. The reason we only asked for fifty feet was, one, we had no idea why it was there. So, we didn't wanna stir the pot too much. And two, they're septic, happens to be located down there, so they would never, ever use that anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's why I asked for more that you wouldn't use.
Yeah, all right. Okay, well, I, I guess.
It's a great question.
Is, is there any reason why we wouldn't just go ahead and remove the whole thing then?
We, we certainly can. We, uh, they would never be used, but we certainly can. It's pretty easy to fix the drawing.
Okay, I mean, I, I don't think you would next necessarily go around looking for places where they're, we're septic tanks and saying no access or, or something, so I.
Correct.
Yeah, so if you have an unnecessary regulation or restriction, it's unneeded, let's just maybe we should just eliminate the whole thing.
That would be fine with us.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm, I'm still confused by why, well, first of all, why it was put on, and I'm looking at the, the map, um, the, of lot P2K up there, and there appears to be on lot four A, a public access and underground utility easement that appears to go up into the corner of lot P2K. Do you see what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, you're talking about this area here.
Yeah.
And what, what's there now is a public access and utilities running through. And what what's there now is a public access and utilities running through there. So the part we're talking about is right in here. There this road, it's it's a little funky. Um the property line is over here. There's access on Michelle Drive here, but the road actually swings right through there.
Does it connect to Cheryl Road?
It does.
There you go.
There you go. So you can again see that here's the property corner here. But yet the road slides through here. So he actually owns all the way to here.
And what benefit is it to your son to have this taken off? What's he planning on doing with it?
Well, the main entrance to the home is here. And he would love to access right here and pull into the main access to the house.
Instead of going on the.
Instead of coming up of a flight of stairs to get to the bi-level back entrance.
I'm just wondering what impact this will have on other um homeowners or people who use that road. Are we going to be hearing from them pounding on the door about why the snowplow can't get through there or something? We get a lot of people showing up here complaining about things.
We haven't heard anything yet, so I.
Have you talked to the neighbors?
Yes.
Okay.
So Commissioner, that and that is why we have this process. So Mr. Um Mr. Gonzalez has done an evaluation of this proposal and the neighbors have been noticed and this is an opportunity for them to give us feedback if they have concerns about this proposal, right?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, that's accurate. All the adjoining neighbors, which means all of the uh property owners uh surrounding this individual property was notified of this amended subdivision and of the date of this commission meeting so that they could provide public testimony if they so do choose, as well as a sign was posted on site.
Okay.
And Mr. McNally, do you have something else you wanted to add? Looked like you did.
Uh Mr. Chair, just maybe after public comment.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Anything further, Commissioners? Please, yeah, this is our time to discuss this.
Okay, so we're looking at this Michelle Drive. And there is probably some kind of an easement for the road. There is a a uh legal description of the location of Michelle Drive, and it likely goes up to that very square corner up above. See this part? Yeah. Okay, that's the legal easement for the road.
Means you speak into the mic, so it's recorded here, Commissioner.
Thank you. That's the legal easement for the road as described in the um records down in the clerk and recorder's office. And now Michelle Drive is not on the easement. Um there's a corner of your son's property, which is on the other side of Michelle Drive. Um and does Michelle Drive also then go um directly north onto whatever the the other subdivision there is?
Chairman Commissioners, let me back up and show you the original plat, and we could take a look at how the uh internal roads are laid out.
Thank you.
So you'll see Michelle Drive is a uh county road. So excuse me, public access utility easement here, so it dead ends and from here is a private drive that takes you to this lot. Um and then it is a portion of here of this, so it extends and widens here and then hits Cheryl Road here.
That angled part of that road looks like it was there when it was platted. And obviously, it was because the no access was put on there.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, correct. I believe Michelle Drive was there before this uh this subdivision was was put in, so that road was there, that top lot, I believe it's numbered four A here, I believe was already here, so had access. Um and then the applicant came to to plot this subdivision and create these roads. They had to, in order to um connect Cheryl to Michelle, uh they had to add that little corner portion to it, I believe.
This is one of those where I look at it and think, what could possibly go wrong? People will sue over anything. And it looks to me like this. Um so is your son going to grant the county some sort of an easement to include that corner across his property so that a subsequent landowner can't come in and say get the heck, you don't have an easement there. You need to get it out of there. Help.
Chairman Commissioners, so that portion is already in easement. So these roads connect. You can drive through here, this corner. Yeah, the property line does extend to the middle of this road, but this corner is part of that road easement. So it's already done. This subdivision was platted uh with this in with this internal road easement that circles these properties.
Okay, so.
There's no dead end here. There's these roads already connect, if that's what.
Okay, there is an easement.
Yes.
So future landowners of lot P two K cannot then come in and say get that darn thing off of there. They can't. Okay.
If there was any type of removal of any type of easement, that would be an amended subdivision and we'd be before you to explain uh what what that would be. But uh, yeah, that would.
Okay.
And Mr. Lasowski, if you'd like to, if you'd like to come in and answer more questions. All right. Thank you. Any any further questions? The only place that I I um might mildly disagree with Commissioner Rolf is that I think that the proposal that's on the table is uh appropriate and adequate. Um because as that road goes further up to the intersection with Cheryl, it makes sense to limit access uh because of the corner and traffic and all of those kinds. If you have cars coming on and off right at at a corner there, it doesn't make sense to me. But I think all they need is the fifty feet and uh from my perspective, that seems adequate. Uh and it's already proposed and evaluated, so we wouldn't have to go further to evaluate a further uh removal of the rest of it, uh which might take more time as well. Um so I like, I prefer the proposal that's on the table now, from my perspective. Anything you want to add to this discussion or contribute? You're welcome. Please do.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, no, I would just echo uh what you said, Mr. Chair, that if the proposal was actually to remove the entire no acts, uh excuse me, the no access restriction. Um I don't know if that type of removal was contemplated when the county did the review. So any of the impacts that would be affected by removing the entire no access thing would probably need to go back through a review process to make sure that you follow um subdivision and plating act and so the review. So certainly that's an option. I think, but at this time, you know, if the county were to expand what it was proposing to do, we would need to go back and actually look at what those impacts might be.
Right.
Because look in the packet, there's a um, you know, a staff report that lays out addressing what the proposal would do. Um and the impacts about just removing just that little section, so.
Does that make sense, Commissioner? That likely it would have go through a whole new review if we wanted to change the.
And that and that does. I just, I just think that maybe there would be an opportunity for staff when something like this were to come up and say, you say to the, say to the uh to the to the landowner, wouldn't it be just easier to eliminate the whole thing? Because it really doesn't appear to be necessary. And if we can get rid of any restrictions in the future uh by simply just, you know, the getting rid of the whole thing instead of just part of it, I think it is more logical. But.
Uh thank, thanks, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Anything else at this point? Here's the other thing, folks, is that um we we haven't seen a preliminary plat in a little while, but typically our process is to hear it, ask all kinds of questions, debate all the things that might be uh of question here from the applicant and hear from the public as well. And then we uh we postpone that decision until a week from today. That's what we always do on a preliminary plat. It's our standard procedure. And it gives uh, for example, Commissioner Payne, some of the questions that you asked, and you want to maybe study those or ask questions of staff in the meantime, or or do some more research. You have that opportunity. We have more opportunity to hear from the public as well. If they want to send in an email or a letter call us or something like that. And then we have one more opportunity a week from today to hear public comment and then make make a decision on that. So that's what we, that's our normal operating procedure for preliminary plat approval. Uh so if we stick to that, that will be our mode of operation. So Commissioners, uh no threat in having to make a decision today. But we want to ask all the questions. We can get them on the table and make sure that we have give staff direction to answer anything that if if there's some question mark there or those kinds of things as well. So if you have any other questions, concerns, please lay them out there.
So what we are approving today is the preliminary plat application.
So today we're hearing, hearing it, and we're setting a date for decision next a week from today.
Oh.
That's our plan.
That's fabulous. Thank you.
So unless you uh unless I get outvoted on that, that's what we do every other time with the preliminary plat uh process. And so uh unless we want to get in trouble with our friends over here and other places, maybe we want to, we need to follow our normal operating procedure. We have that in our uh commission meeting policies and procedures as well. If that's the way, we will, we will act upon preliminary plat approvals. We'll hear them and then a week later, we'll take them up for decision.
It is a darn good thing. We have you with your eighteen years of experience to guide us through. So thank you, Andy.
Thank you. But this is the time to really cuss and discuss all kinds of whatever the options and ideas are about this. So please, if there's any further questions. Yeah. Okay. And Mr. Lasowski, if you have anything else you want to add or anything else you want to address the commission about 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 this items after hearing this discussion, you're more than welcome before we take pub, general public comment. So if, okay, great. Um is there any public comment on this item? Any further public comment? Any further public comment? Okay, prior to asking for a motion to uh table this until next uh Thursday for a decision day, um Commissioners, uh any questions you'd like uh staff to answer? I think you probably heard our discussion and there's a few things that you may want to follow up on. I think we're, we're pretty clear, though, on questions. Any other questions for staff?
No.
Okay. Hearing no further public testimony, public comment, uh Commissioners, is there a motion to take this up for a decision at our regular scheduled meeting one week from today, which is the twenty ninth of August?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to take the information of public comment under under uh consideration and make a decision on this item, plan to make a decision on this item at our regular scheduled meeting on Thursday, August twenty ninth. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here today and we'll we'll be here with bells on on the twenty ninth, hopefully go through it, so. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is preliminary plat application for Bitterroot Estates subdivision. Good morning. Still morning, right?
Still morning.
We haven't been that long.
Matter of fact, are you, everyone okay at this time? Want to continue? You're okay?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. For the record, Rachel Ward with Community Development and Planning. Uh before you was a request for subdivision um uh subdivision two thousand twenty three zero one one. A four lot first minor subdivision to be called Bitterroot Estates. It's located south of Carmen Road along Rosette Lane. The property owners and applicants are Raymond and Donna Jean LaFramboise, and their technical representative is Kasni and Associates. Uh for the record, I just want to note that a copy of the agency comments uh pertaining to the file were sent to the applicant and to their consultant on August thirteenth. And a copy of the staff report was provided to them on August nineteenth. Um so this is a vicinity map showing the general location of the subdivision. Uh as I mentioned, it's south of Carmen Road, um south of Rosette Lane. Um and that is generally the grasslands development that you're seeing just to the north, that uh residential development. So as I mentioned, this is a first minor subdivision uh that would divide an eleven point four seven acre parcel into four lots, each for one single family dwelling. Uh the lots will be between two point five one and three point five five acres in size. All of the lots are proposed to be served by individual wells, individual onsite wastewater treatment systems and utilities. Direct access to the lots uh is proposed via an internal access road, which is an extension of Rosette Lane. The applicant proposes to utilize the existing fire hydrants located in the grassland subdivision to meet the fire protection requirements of the subdivision regulations. And they're also requesting a variance to uh the subdivision regulation regulations, chapter eleven, H sixteen, which requires that roads be constructed within road easements extended for future road connections. Uh and lastly, I just want to mention, because this is a first minor subdivision, there's no requirement for parkland. This is the preliminary plat of Bitterroot Estates, and there's a few things I just want to highlight and talk about on this preliminary preliminary plat. So the first that you see in orange highlighted um is a ninety foot wide Bureau of Reclamation underground drain easement, and it traverses the property. The applicant provided a special use permit from the HBID on behalf of the Bureau of Rec, um which allows for the construction of Rosette Lane within this easement. Uh they did note that driveways that traverse this easement will be required to obtain separate uh special use permits from the HBID um prior to construction over the easement, um including any other encroachments as well. There are conditions of approval which notify future landowners of this easement and the requirements and restrictions associated with it. Second thing in front of you highlighted, um you'll notice a twenty foot private irrigation and utility easement, which is just south um of the property. This area has historically been used for agricultural purposes. Um and there's currently a private open irrigation ditch uh that serves an irrigation pivot. The ditch is open up to about the center of uh the southern property line um there, and then it turns into an underground pipe to overflow that terminates to the east of the property. Right now, um this uh irrigation uh ditch, um yeah, sits in a ten foot private irrigation and utility easement. And with the recording of this final plat, um they will uh incorporate that uh a boundary line adjustment uh to have that irrigation uh infrastructure within a twenty foot easement. Uh the applicants have also indicated that they intend to bury the irrigation uh infrastructure along the entire southern portion of the subject property. Um there are conditions uh associated with this subdivision that require the boundary line adjustment to be completed with that final plat, ensuring that that twenty foot private irrigation and utility easement that you're seeing on there is just to the south of the subject property. Um so that boundary line adjustment be completed with the final plat and also that the applicant either need to bury the open irrigation uh ditch or install fencing as appropriate um of appropriate construction, I should say, to ensure public safety, uh particularly uh with regard to young children and pets. Um this is a requirement in our subdivision regulations and is something that's been done in the past. And then lastly, the the third thing that I want to point out on this preliminary plat, you'll notice that thirty feet of the sixty foot county road and utility easement for the extension of Rosette Lane is on an adjacent lot within the subdivision. that I excuse me, that is not within the subdivision. This lot that you can see just that north east corner was created through an exemption called a family transfer. It is not a part of the subdivision and at the time of final plat, signatures from the property owner of that lot will be required, dedicating this easement for Rosette Lane as a future county road and utility easement. There is a condition of approval which addresses the need to meet surveying requirements, including applicable signatures at the time of final plat. So a few other pertinent facts that I just want to go over. The first one with regard to fire protection. In order to meet the fire protection requirements outlined in Appendix K of the subdivision regulations, the applicant is proposing to use an offsite fire suppression water source via the fire hydrants that are located in the grassland subdivision. The grassland subdivision fire water suppression system is owned and operated by the Grasslands Estate Homeowners Association. An initial approval to utilize that system was provided with the preliminary plat application. There's two hydrants that are located, one on Lovegrass Lane and the other on Spangletop Lane. Utilization of this system will not diminish the capacity to serve existing development because flow tests done in 2021 indicate that the hydrant flow had at least 1,000 gallons per minute at 20 PSI. This is a class two subdivision, which means that the fire suppression requirements require that 250 gallons per minute at 20 PSI is needed. So they're covered there. With regard to mail delivery, mail delivery is anticipated to be approved by the USPS to utilize centralized mailboxes located at the intersection of Bluegrass Lane and Red Top Lane. This is what provides for the grassland subdivisions also. The applicant will construct an extension of Rosette Lane within the Bitterroot Estates subdivision to a local road section number one, a gravel standard, as allowed for section 4.19 of the Lewis and Clark County Public Works Manual, because the local road will serve less than 400 average annual daily trips. And all residential lots will be at least 2.5 acres or larger. There was a traffic impact study that was prepared by Avalon Traffic Services Services and it notes impacts to area roads will be minimal. It specifically notes that there will be an estimated 38 additional vehicle trips per day, which would contribute approximately 4% of the vehicles per day to Carmen Road and less than 1% additional VPD to to Frontage Road. In reviewing the preliminary plat application materials, there was documentation from the Montana Natural Heritage Program indicating that wetlands may have existed on the far east side of the subject property. The subdivision regulations require that the applicant delineate the boundaries of wetlands and a land assessment for meadow lark search was provided with the application, indicating that there so there's three criteria that make up a wetland. Those three criteria were not observed on the subject property. So there are no wetlands. There's documentation that no wetlands exist on the subject property. And then the last thing that kind of ties into this, we did receive a comment from the Water Quality Protection District indicating that the area is subject to high groundwater. This is based on groundwater monitoring. It's done on six wells within the vicinity by the Water Quality Protection District. And this is also substantiated by groundwater monitoring done by the Lewis and Clark County Environmental Health Division, indicating that in 2022, I believe, groundwater was observed between 5.7 and 7.2 feet below ground level. In order to mitigate this, the applicant is proposing that pressure dose sand like sand lined septic systems be installed to mitigate any separation requirements required by Sanitations and Subdivisions Act. So as I mentioned, part of the application is a variance request from chapter 11, H16. That section states when county road easements are extended to exterior properties, property boundaries within a subdivision for a future road connection as provided in section 11, H4, the roadway shall be constructed in accordance with the county road standards in the Lewis and Clark County Public Works Manual. A few things I want to note. So the applicant is proposing to extend 60-foot county road and utility easements to the east and west property boundaries for future road connections. The properties to the west of the subdivision are developed with residential and agricultural structures, including a structure immediately adjacent to the extended road and utility easement to the west. The eastern county road and utility easement terminates on the eastern property line, which abuts what I'll call a flag lot. A portion of that family transfer parcel that does not include a public access easement, which would accommodate future expansion of the road further east and less dedicated at a time in the future. I also want to note that because of the termination of Rosette Lane exists along that southern property line, there is potential for Rosette Lane to be expanded to the south at a time in in the future and then, of course, expanded to the east and west at a later time as well. The staff report includes a few more details regarding just facts of of the variance. We did receive a public comment from Public Works Department indicating that they generally like to see roads constructed within these easements as required by our subdivision regulations. Though, given the structure that exists to the west, they understand the variance request for that. They would like to see extension of the road to the east. However, they do acknowledge that it would also be nice to have that road and utility easement to allow for that further extension. They acknowledge that's an obstacle at this point, so. With that, as part of the review process, a summary of the proposal and preliminary plat was sent to various public agencies noted in the staff report. We received six agencies, agency comments, including from the Public Works Department, Address Coordinator, Lead Plan Manager, City of Helena Community Development and Planning, Water Quality Protection District. And there were no significant issues besides those that I've addressed already. All of these agency comments are included in the packets as exhibit C. And again, these were provided to the applicant before this meeting. Notice of the proposal and of this meeting was sent to adjacent landowners on July 29th. A legal notice was published in the Helena Independent Record on August 3rd and a sign was posted on site on August 5th. And I will note that to date, we've had, we've received no public comments with regard to this project. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the Bitterroot Estates Minor Subdivision, subject to the 22 conditions of approval based on the recommended recommended findings of fact included in the staff report. I just want to say the staff report provides more details about the conditions of approval and specifically provides connections between those conditions and the findings of fact, as well as the regulations allowing for those conditions of approval. So the next three slides include draft motions, but I'm happy to pause here and answer any questions if you have any.
Yeah, let's hold off on the motions for now. But I really appreciate the the way you did tie the findings and the conditions together so that we can see how they're related. There, just to just to clarify one of the things before I pass it on to the other commissioners. The regulation would be that road is Rosette, is that is it Rosette built? And then an extender east and west would be built to the property lines. So the variance is, the request is that that easement would be put in place, but there would only be a hammerhead turn there or a hammerhead extension essentially at the end so that the car or someone could turn around or an emergency vehicle could turn around, but not build all the way to the property lines, correct?
Mr. Chair, that's correct. So you can see on this preliminary plat along the southern property line, that full 60-foot road and utility easement is shown to both the east and to the west property lines. But the road would not be, they're requesting this variance.
Thank you. Yeah, just wanted to make sure that was clear for our commissioners as well. How about questions for staff at this time? Commissioners?
If I.
Please.
If I might. On the maps that's up up now, could you, Mark, make it more clear to me which is Rosette Land Line on there maybe with your pointer?
For sure.
You can find it. There it is.
Here's what I'm going to do. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolf, you see the orange line there? That extension from the north, Rosette Lane, is an existing road within the grasslands development. It would be extended south from that development along this 60-foot road and utility easement.
So and the hammerhead would be right up here, right above this? Yeah, okay. Explain to me again that easement that goes diagonally through the through the properties there.
For sure, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolf, that's a Bureau of Reclamation underground drain and it's been there for a good long while. It's my understanding that those underground drains were established to accommodate groundwater and to essentially drain the area. And so some of the restrictions that would be be put would prohibit the placement of trees and shrubs because that vegetation can damage the tiles of the underground drain.
And which way, which direction does it is is down? Where which way does it drain to?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolf, that's a good question. I would have to look into that.
Other questions?
Oh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolf, it sounds like the applicant may have some.
Yeah, we'll have opportunity to clear some of this up in just a minute.
Okay, all right.
I'd like to make a comment about this underground drain. When I was first a commissioner, I went down to Dan Carlin's office down at Public Works and he had this big map up on his wall. And it had to do with identifying the D2 drain. And it's all part of a way when they were first settling this valley, and I'm thinking it was in the 1950s when they put the the irrigation system and the big dams in. First, they had to drain off because a lot of our valley was swampy and boggy and it couldn't be farmed. So this is, it's been in there for a long time and it is very important. And there are rules about restricting agricultural activities and this is a prime agricultural. This is really the basis of our whole farming community in the valley. Isn't that interesting?
Yes, yes.
I don't know that it helps us, but.
Well, it's very important to identify it and make sure that any future landowner of these lots would know because you you can't build your house on top of it either. So if there were any homes built here, they'd have to avoid the these easements and those kinds of things. And there's certain restrictions, things that can't be planted on them or whatever. But and then, as you said, to cross it with your driveway and those kinds of things would have to be permitted as well. So, yeah, thank you for that. Any other questions right now?
Not right now.
Okay, anything else you want to add? Okay. All right, this is the time for the applicant to lay it on us, give us any information you'd like and why and the whats and the answer some of the questions and whatnot. And if you give your name and address for the record, please, sir. Welcome.
My name is Ray La Fromboise. My address is 3731 Juniper Drive. The comment on the flow of the Bureau of Rec Rec ditch goes from the Crick, I think it's Prickly Pear, and it goes southerly east and it flows down and it goes across some private property and there's a drainage ditch where the city drains their ponds. And it drains into that big drainage ditch and then it shoots all that water to Lake Helena.
And then she kind of going into either Prickly Pear or goes into or maybe 10 Mile and then into East Town?
Right, yeah, yeah. There, it's a 90-foot easement and I was, I contacted them and I had to go to them and get a variance from them through Rachel. And they said they give them all the time to all kinds of people and it was just noted that they'd never dig them up or do anything with them. But if there was a possibility they had to, they would do it. So that's where they got a 90-foot easement across there. And she said, you can't build structures, but you can put roads, fences, things like that.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you. And then maybe just tell us a little bit about your project and the how, whats, whys and.
Okay. How it got started was it was all agriculture. I put up a lot of hay. I had weed certified free hay. When grassland subdivision subdivided over there, they were infested with weeds, thistle mostly. And I called the county and they said they could either cut it or spray it and the person wouldn't do any of it. So all the weeds blew in on my hay field and then I lost all my agricultural status hay. And so I fought the weed problem for four years and I thought, well, it's time to maybe do what they did, subdivide, so I can get rid of the weed problem. And and I couldn't, I could raise hay, but it wasn't certified anymore. I lost that because of the weeds.
And the one question I have is you obviously are going to have to have a good relationship with Grasslands.
Yes.
For both transportation and and firewater. Can you just tell us a little bit about that and how that's coming together?
Oh, yeah, the grasslands, you know, they give us the fire protection status to tap into their fire hydrants, take care of the fire protection on all this 11.3 acres or subdivision. And I have Dax Zilantro, he's the vice president, so he came and but he can tell you more about it if you'd like. But we have a good relationship with them all.
Good.
Yep.
Because you're you're, the folks that will eventually live on these lots will then access through grasslands.
Yes.
Add to the traffic and all of that.
Right.
That's all been discussed with.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, good.
Yep.
Just want to make sure we have that discussed here as well. All right, any other questions, Commissioner?
Being the person, the bean counter and, okay, so Grasslands, you you've, do you have a written agreement, something that is recorded? So after all of us are dead and new people or they can't come back on you and say, no, you cannot use access you or the same with the fire protection? Is that a?
I I don't, I went through the the board and the board gave me access for their fire suppression, but they said it wouldn't go into play until it was approved.
By us?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm thinking about down the road ways. Will this continue? What I see happening, and I did a lot of work with irrigators and the original, you know, mom and dad, they get along fine with all the neighbors and they can differentiate their irrigation by moving a rock. Okay, that works fine with mom and dad. And then the kids get it and it's not so much. And by the time the the third generation comes around, you better have a measuring device on that because they can't agree on anything. And so I I think it's particularly important to make sure there is a black and white agreement someplace that people can reference and say, we can use that. You said you agreed, we paid you a dollar for that right or whatever. we can use that. You said you agreed, we paid you a dollar for that right or whatever. You've done that?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Anything else you'd like to add to it?
No, no, I'm just on the irrigation easement that runs from east to west. We have a twenty-foot easement on there now. That ditch is was a private ditch for my pivot. But the easement is only, or the irrigation ditch is only two feet wide and sixteen inches deep. So it at all times to run my pivot, I only have a trickle of water in there. It's a foot of water from the valley. So the amount of water that goes through there, I have a twelve-inch pipe that the water goes through. And when I'm running my pivot, it's not even half full. So that kind of tells you the amount of water that runs through there to to take care of the pivot irrigation on the rest of it.
Okay, thank you.
Another question, if I might. Up up in the top right corner, there's a an empty one, I think it's it's where the designation of Rosette line lane is is in the middle. That's not, is that part of your property as well?
Which one?
Top, the top right?
The five acre piece?
Right, correct. Yeah.
That was a family transfer to my son.
Okay.
Yeah, and and that is out of the subdivision. It's not part of it.
All right, so that is a private.
Yeah.
That is you're gonna so that that's part of your family.
Yes. Yep.
The
And he's he's got a house built there. He did it last year, so he's all settled in on that five acres.
Pardon me?
He built a house last year there, and he's all settled in on that five acres. Yep.
Okay, all right. It looked like someone else in your party would like to make comment as well. So if you'd like to come forward, need to come to the microphone, state your name, name and address for the record so we have it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. If we have further questions, we'll call you back up. Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, Dex Sotrow, I'm the President of Grassland Estates, and I was just going to clarify on the fire access. We have a signed agreement for them to access that, that the board approved and the members approved. And so once this is approved, then that'll be a written document that will be submitted with the plat approval. So that'll be in perpetuity with that. So just for that clarification.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And and I'll just add to that, Commissioner, looking at page thirty-six at fifty-two of the staff report under conditions of approval, and part of this is, you know, staff's evaluation and recommended requirements is that we have a requirement around that that issue providing fire protection. And I'll just read part of this. It says, prior to approval of the final plat onsite or offsite, fire systems shall be inspected, certified, complying with requirements preliminary approval, professional engineer by a professional engineer licensed state of Montana, copy of the inspection certification provided, fire protection authority having jurisdiction. After certification by professional engineers, so be submitted, applicant shall provide written verification of that. And then C at the right at the bottom there, all necessary easements and agreements shall be secured and submitted to the county community development planning department by the applicant, its successors and assigns for water source prior to submitting final subdivision application. So all of that is covered in our in our processes. Just wanted to.
Thank you.
Yep, but it's a good question. Thank you very much. Any other questions at this time? Any further comment from our applicant? All right, so we'll open it up for public testimony, public, public comment, any public comment? Any public comment on this item? All right, commissioners, again, this is a lot of information, and as I can tell that not all of it has been studied to its full extent yet, and that's our opportunity to do next. And so we listen to the preliminary staff presentation. And we take, again, a week of time to study the application, answer questions that we need to answer and give the public an opportunity to weigh in again. And then we could set this on the for the twenty-ninth as well for a decision day if we'd like. Unless there's another another request by staff.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hunthausen, that is fine with me. I will be out of the office, visiting family in Michigan. If Greg McNally is willing to step in on behalf of me, that's great. Otherwise, I will be back the following week, the end of the thirty-five working day review period is September eleventh. I wanted to make sure to give myself and everyone as much time as possible, so.
So we could do it the following week as well, so that then we wouldn't have two subdivisions on the same day either. But.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, Ms. Ward indicated, yes, she's going to be out of out of the office, but our office will be happy to to be present if necessary. But again, going through subdivision with decision process does takes a little bit of time.
Yeah.
Dividing them up does work.
So Thursday, the fifth work. How about for the applicant? I could take it out of the head, or you can come back up to the microphone if you'd like. So Thursday, the fifth, looks like it would work for the applicant as well. Commissioners, is that okay for you? Anything, anything, anybody? Okay. And again, we, this is a lot of information and what we do and what we have committed to do by policy agreed upon in the past and approved by the commission is that we listen to preliminary approval applications, and we take a week or more to contemplate those, learn the the issues, find out if there's anything that we have questions about as a commission, make sure that we're familiar with the staff report and all of the ins and outs, and then we bring it back for a decision time and and talk about the reasons why we're making it, whatever decision we make. So just in explanation. Okay, anything else commissioners that you'd like to discuss or bring up on this item? Okay, I'd be looking for a motion to take this item up on the fifth of September for potential decision.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Move in second to make a decision, move this to September fifth at our regularly scheduled meeting nine in the morning in this room for Decision Day. Commissioners, any further discussion? Thank you all. Appreciate the work on this. This represents a ton of hours of work and for everybody. So thank you very much. And we'll do our best to be ready to go on the fifth. Okay, with that, commissioners, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the commission, but not on today's agenda. Welcome. If you have a comment, please come forward, give us your name and information for the record, and we will be all ears. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. So my name is Chris Cooy. Some or all of you may recognize me as the Deputy Director of Transportation for the city. I am not here in my role in that capacity today, so I'm here as a resident and property owner of the county up in the North Star subdivision. So I don't know if all of you are aware of our ongoing issues with our water utility. I know that the water utility does not fall under the authority of this commission. But I did want to make you aware that we have been in a battle with them for years and years, ongoing over a decade. There is a should be a scheduled meeting for them with the Public Service Commission this coming Tuesday. Unfortunately, it happens at nine thirty. You guys will all be, I assume, in this room at another meeting. But there there have been a number of rulings by the PSC in the past on this. One of those commissioners even made a comment the last, I think it was three weeks ago, that this was on their docket that he's been serving for eight years, and this utility has been in front of them for the entire time that he's been on the commission. So the general problem out there is that there is not enough water for our neighborhood. So there's about three hundred properties that are affected by this up in that subdivision. So we over the past, as I've said, probably decade, the the water has been cut off out there completely a number of times. Most recently, July twentieth, our water was cut off without notice for probably a period of about six hours. The general problem, as the utility will describe it, is they blame the residents for overwatering our lawns. If you've ever driven through our subdivision, you'd know what a crack that is. I would say maybe twenty percent of our properties even water their lawns. The rest have given up, gone to zero scaping, you know, whatever the case may be. But they originally had six wells on in this subdivision. They're down to two. They've made no effort to improve the infrastructure. Two years ago, when this was at the PSC, I offered to write grant applications. I brought up the ARPA money that was just coming out at the time with the county, offered to come and basically do what I'm doing here now with you guys for ARPA money back then. Didn't hear a peep from the utility company for help for nothing. So really just wanted to bring it to your attention, right? It affects a large number of property owners out there that are within the county. I'll hope to maybe bring back an update after Tuesday, so the the utility is required to turn in a plan by tomorrow to address not only the immediate problem, but long-term solution. The last plan they gave was to basically put us on even odd restrictions for the entire summer every year, and that was their plan. It worked for one year. So last year, we had no problems. We were on even odd restrictions from June to September. And my lawn was able to stay green. This year, we went on restrictions on June, and in July, they cut off our water, and we haven't been allowed to water since. So clearly, that plan doesn't work. They've made no effort. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention, and I'll be happy to to follow up and and come back. So there may be something as simple as asking for a letter of support or, you know, to something as complex as maybe asking for some kind of funding to support infrastructure out there if they do finally decide, or if the PSC orders them to do something more aggressive. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment, Mr. Cooy. Appreciate it. Look forward to an update. Any further public comment? Any further public comment? Any further public comment? All right, commissioners, thank you very much for a good meeting. We will stand adjourned.